We'll get started. This is a consolidated meeting of the Community Development Commission, as well as the Buenos Sanitation District and the City of Vista. We've been off for about a month, so perhaps you'll forgive us if we're all a little rusty during the meeting, but it's good to be back and to be here with you this evening. We'll begin by having a call to order and then the roll call, so let's have the roll call.
The record will reflect that all members are present with the exception of Mayor Protem Campbell.
Yes, I understand Mr. Campbell is another meeting that he had this evening and was unable to be here. So we'll begin now then with the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation. That will be led by Reverend Beth Johnson of the Palomar Unitarian Universalist Fellowship. So after the pledge, if you'd remain standing, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's take a moment and breathe with me. Breathe with me and be present in this moment at this time with one another. Spirit of life, spirit of love, spirit of beloved community, we gather together to be of use, to be of service to our community. Be with each one here. Be with this council in its work for the common good. Keep within each heart a love for the cause of the welfare of all life and a dedication to enriching the lives of all people. Keep before us all the principles of justice, equity, and compassion. Guide all present here, especially these our officials, in our labor to maintain and strengthen our public lives. In gratitude for the life that we have been given and our ability to speak and be together to work together, we gather in gratitude in the name of all that is holy. To each one we pray. Amen. And blessed be him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
Well, we didn't have a closed session today, so there's nothing to report about a closed session. So we have some presentations this evening that we'd like to make. And I'll go... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we... There is one. See, I told you we'd be rusty. Approval of the agenda.
There are no additions or deletions, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Well, first of all, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to ask Mr. Jeff McCain to please come forward to the podium. We have a special award that we'd like to give to McCain. Come on, Jeff. It gives me really a great deal of pleasure to offer this letter of appreciation to Mr. Jeff McCain. I've known Mr. McCain for 21 years. He's been a businessman here in the Business Park for 21 years and has been one of our premier companies out in the Vista Business Park and has contributed a lot to the city over the years in a number of ways. His innovation and his ability to help the city with a lot of the difficulties that we've had in traffic and putting together equipment and testing some of the equipment from time to time within the City of Vista, not only, I think, helped his company, but was a great effort for the City of Vista. So we're very appreciative of Mr. McCain and the things that he's accomplished here in the City of Vista, and we've really appreciated having him here in the City of Vista. And I have here a letter of appreciation that I'd like to read. Mr. McCain has received a special award, and as I read this letter of appreciation, it'll indicate what this award is. It says, "Jeff McCain, CEO of McCain Traffic Supply, has been selected as the Ernst &amp; Young Entrepreneur of the Year in 2009, in a 2009 Award for San Diego in the Consumer and Business Product and Services category. The City of Vista and the Vista City Council have always appreciated Jeff McCain and McCain Traffic Supply as a community partner, business leader, and innovator. It is satisfying to see you and your company receive this much deserved recognition. We wish you all the best at the Ernst &amp; Young LLP Entrepreneur of the Year 2009 National Program in November." So I understand that you're a candidate for the national award as well.
Yes, I am. That's quite a... Twenty-five or twenty-six other people.
That's great. "And as a leader in products and services in the traffic, transit, and parking industries, you've proven time and time again the importance of staying on the cutting edge of innovation. In recognition of Jeff McCain's commitment to excellence, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council present this letter of appreciation. We know you will continue to be a source of pride for Vista for many years to come," and it's signed by all members of the City Council. We also have one other thing that we'd like to present to you, and this is a copy of the San Diego Business Journal, front page, in which it has a picture of Jeff and talking about the things that he's accomplished in the award, so we'd like to present that to you as well.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the entire city. It's been great working here and being a partner. Really, I like to thank people I work with as... Think of them as partners, and certainly the City of Vista has always been there. I think the biggest compliment I could say about the city is they're almost like seamless, and I mean that in a positive way. As someone like me, you know, you have an organization to run and you want to focus on what you need to do as far as that organization goes. So when things get in your way that makes that more difficult, your job becomes more difficult. And the city's been just the opposite for me. They've always been there supporting me. Supported me when we want to expand. They seem to have been backwards, and that's unusual today. So I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council and the staff and everyone for a great job of supporting me and for this today. Again, thank you.
We have some law enforcement personnel that we'd like to also pay tribute to, and we'll ask Captain Curran to come up and make the introductions, and then I'll make the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, distinguished council. It's an honor to be here tonight. And up here with me is Joanne Eagle from AAA and Captain Deb Schroeder from the Oceanside CHP office. And we're here tonight to honor our top two stolen vehicle deputies for the year. And first one I'm going to introduce here is Jason Scroggins. Jason was hired in 99. In that time, he's worked in the jail, Los Colinas Jail. Come on up here, Jason. He worked at Downtown Jail. In 2003, he was transferred up here to Vista Station to work patrol, and he's been here ever since. He started working on the... In the cops unit, that's our community-oriented policing, on the gang enforcement team specifically. The other deputy that we want to honor is Deputy Oscar Butler. He's hiding back there. Here he comes. Oscar's been on the department since 2005. He worked at the... Started at the Downtown Courthouse and came to Vista in 2006. And we were fortunate to have him for about three years working the streets of Vista, and he recently left us to go to the Forest Ranch Station. He wanted to be a little closer to home, so definitely our loss, but his gain. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor. I know he has something to say. Oh, I'm sorry. AAA first. I'm sorry. I'm out of order. Joanne?
Thank you. I'm very pleased to be here today to present these awards to these deputies. They've done a fantastic job in recovering vehicles, and we call this the 10-851 Awards. And I'd like to present the first one to Deputy Oscar Butler. And this is the timeframe. This is his first award, and from February 1st, 2008 to January 30th, 2009, he had three rolling vehicles, 12 abandoned, and three arrests. And the value of that is $80,000. Thank you. And the second deputy is Jason Scroggins, and this is his second award. The timeframe is April 1st, 2007 to March 30th, 2008. He had five rolling vehicles, 11 banded, and five arrests, valued at $80,000. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I've got a couple of proclamations that I would like to issue. First of all, Deputy... Let's do Deputy Scroggins first. You've been up here before, haven't you?
Once or twice.
Whereas Deputy Jason Scroggins has been awarded the Second Auto Theft Award by the AAA Club of Southern California in conjunction with the California Highway Patrol. And whereas between April 1st, 2007, and March 30th, 2008, San Diego County Sheriff Deputy Jason Scroggins recovered a total of 16 vehicles, of which five were rolling stonings, which resulted in the arrest of five subjects. Whereas the value of the recovered... We've heard this, haven't we? The value of the recovered vehicles totaled $80,000, entitling Deputy Scroggins to earn his second auto theft award. This award is presented to the deputies who have made a significant impact on the recovery of stolen vehicles and arrests of the car thieves. Whereas the Vista City Council extends its thanks to Deputy Scroggins for a job well done and commends him on the reputation he earned as competent and effective law enforcement officer. And therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate Deputy Scroggins on being awarded the auto theft award and to hereby proclaim Thursday, August 13th, 2009, as Deputy Jason Scroggins Day in the City of Vista. Congratulations. Says, "Whereas Deputy Oscar Butler has been awarded the Auto Theft Award by AAA Club of Southern California in conjunction with the California Highway Patrol. Whereas between February 1st, 2008 and January 30th, 2009, San Diego County Sheriff... San Diego County Sheriff Deputy Oscar Butler recovered a total of 15 vehicles, of which three were rolling stonings that resulted in the arrest of three subjects. Whereas the value of his recovered vehicles totaled $75,000, entitling Deputy Butler to earn his first auto theft award." And this award is presented to the deputies who have made a significant impact in the recovery of stolen vehicles. Whereas the Vista City Council extends its thanks to Deputy Butler for a job well done and commends him on his reputation that he has earned as a competent and effective law enforcement officer. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do congratulate Deputy Butler on being awarded the auto theft award and do hereby proclaim Wednesday, July 12th, 2009, as Deputy Oscar Butler Day in the City of Vista. So again, congratulations. Do you want to hear from the Highway Patrol?
Deputy Butler.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for all that you've done and that you continue to do for the City of Vista. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
Okay, we... You want to go ahead?
I can introduce the next one. Another award here today. I'd like to invite Deputy George Chrysler to come up here. George joined the Sheriff's Department in 2001 after serving his country in the United States Army. He started out at Downtown Jail, and he was transferred to the City of Vista in 2004. We've enjoyed his services ever since. And last year, he was transferred and selected to work on the cops team, specifically at the Townside Office. Late last year, we noticed an increase in... An application for massage licenses and such in town here. George did a little work with his partners. I know he wouldn't take all the credit for it, but he took some... Took an extra effort on that, chased it down, and proceeded to really work an extensive prostitution case here in the city. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I had the privilege of attending the briefing that morning that the operation took place, and I was really impressed. There must have been 80 police officers there, and Deputy Chrysler put it all together and took charge of it. And so we really appreciate all that you did that day and all that you've accomplished. Let me go ahead and read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas in June of 2008, Deputy George C. Chrysler was assigned to the Townside Community Oriented Policing and Problem Solving Unit, which is called the cops team. Prior to this assignment, he was a corporal and field training officer at the Vista Patrol Station. Whereas as a cops deputy, Deputy Chrysler is responsible for the enforcement and training of all alcohol and tobacco-related activities. He is one of several great instructors and assists with the Junior Deputy Academy. Deputy Chrysler is also a member of the Mobile Field Force Response Unit and a certified bike patrol team member of the Vista Station. Whereas on May 2009, Deputy Chrysler began looking into allegations of prostitution at numerous businesses, initiated investigations and conducted periodic surveillance and background checks on suspected individuals. Whereas in June of 2009, Deputy Chrysler planned and conducted a major undercover operation targeting nine massage parlors operating in the city. This operation involved over 80 law enforcement officers and agents from numerous agencies, as well as city and state investigators. Whereas the operation concluded with 24 arrests and temporary closure of nine massage parlors. Whereas the mayor and members of the Vista City Council extend a sincere thank you and a job well done to Deputy Chrysler for his hard work, professionalism, and dedication to the Sheriff's Department and the City of Vista. Deputy Chrysler exemplifies the commitment to making the City of Vista a safer and better place to live. And now for the mayor and members of the Vista City Council to hereby proclaim Friday, August 14th, 2009, as Deputy George Chrysler Day in the City of Vista. And with great appreciation, I give this to you."
I appreciate it, first of all, for the proclamation, Captain, my team. I appreciate everything you guys have done. Helped me out with this. Wasn't just me. They're sitting in the back right now, along with the get team guys, who are helpful on that. They had two assigned members that helped me as team leaders. It was a large operation, and without their help, it wouldn't have gone down the way it did. There's still things going on with that case, so there's things that are operating that we see that... The temporary closures, but we're hoping to make it permanent within the next 60 days with some other help from different law agencies. So once again, I appreciate that very much for this. Means a lot, especially to our team. So thank you.
Would you like to call up the team and picture taken together?
Let's do it. If we could have the whole team come up. Dave Low, Paul Michalk, Kirsten Warwick, Elton Mira, Sergeant Mata.
Sergeant Mata.
Now, I don't imagine you were bashful during this... This exercise that you went through.
And Mr. Mayor, I know they want you in there.
Okay. Next, we'll go to the consent calendar. These are items that can be acted on one motion from the City of Council, and that's items C1 through C13. And do we have any items that the council would like to remove from the consent calendar for further consideration? Mr. Gronky?
Yeah, I'd like to register a no vote on C5, and I'd like to pull C12.
Okay, C12. Mrs. Ritter?
Yeah, I'd like to pull C5 and then...
You're going to vote no on C5?
No, I just want to pull it. I want to talk about it.
I'll pull no.
I think I'll pull C10, just for... Just a little report for people that don't understand that maybe.
Okay, any others? I don't have any others from the audience. If you have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second for Mr. Lopez? Okay, then please cast your votes. Okay, that is unanimous. Okay, we'll go next to item C5. It's a cabaret license application for El Asadero Restaurant at 1717 East Vista Way. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Patrick Johnson. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and along with me is Lynn Dedman, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. Would you like a report, or do you just have questions?
Mrs. Ritter, it's your item that you wanted to pull.
Well, I don't necessarily need a report, but I saw there that he was requesting a mariachi and karaoke every day from 7:00 to 10:00. And I just thought that was too much, but possibly it would be better for Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights or something, you know, to limit that. And then if there was a special day, maybe he could come in for a permit. I just thought that that would be a lot to have a trio and all of that every night.
And the reason why staff recommend it every day is because the owner wanted to have the mariachi trio on holidays. And unfortunately, via the ABC, if the holiday does not fall on a Thursday through Saturday, then he's not able to have the mariachi trio. Originally, we thought there'd be a special permit process that we could go through, but there's not.
Oh, so he... So then he can't?
Yeah, so if the holiday fell on a Tuesday, then he would not have cabaret on that day. He could only have it for the days that he's allowed to have it.
Does he intend to have it every day?
No, his intention is to have it Thursday through Saturday from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m.
But he could have it every day.
He could. This has a possibility.
How long has he been in business there? Do you know that? Anybody know that? Sorry. Ask those hard questions.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I believe he's been in business since the early '90s in Vista.
Oh.
The owner, Victor Rosso, is here to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
Do you have some questions? Mr. Rosso, if you'd please come forward.
My name is Victor Rosso, owner of El Asadero Restaurant.
So do you intend to have karaoke and entertainment every single night?
No, ma'am.
Just on the weekends?
Just on the weekends. That was my primary... Just have it on the weekends, but I was suggested to have it every day because I don't know the reason. But my thing was have it just Thursday, Sunday.
Okay. If that's what you're going to do, then I don't have a problem with that. I just... I thought it would be too much to have it every day.
Mr. Lopez?
I personally know this restaurant, and I think that most of the time that since I'm in the business, most of them do have them on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday sometimes, Sunday. And he has a good reputation as far as, you know, not serving to minors and having any problems like that. So, you know, I think it's a good restaurant, and I'm going to be in support of this tonight.
Then I would make a move for approval, if that's okay.
Okay. Did you have a comment you want to make? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there are no further questions, please cast your votes. Okay, that is approved with Mr. Gronky voting no. Okay, the next item that was pulled, I believe, was C10. Mrs. Ritter, that's the one you pulled. Restoration of California's Delta and Water Supply.
Yeah, and I know that's a kind of a subject that I hear a lot about, and so I thought maybe it would be interesting if we could just get a quick, just a little summary of that for people who don't know about it and don't understand this.
The item before you recommends the City of Vista's support for the restoration of the San Joaquin River Delta ecosystem and the creation of a more reliable water supply in California. This item also lends support for the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, a critical component in achieving these goals. The San Diego region imports approximately 85% to 90% of its water from the Colorado River in Northern California. In June 2008, the governor declared a statewide drought, citing two years of below-average rainfall, minimum snow melt runoff, and below-average water storage levels in most reservoirs. The rainfall and snow melt concerns have been exacerbated by restrictions on pumping through the Sacramento-San Joaquin River Delta to the impacts of the endangered Delta smelt, due to the impacts of the endangered Delta smelt. Currently, most cities in San Diego County are at a Level 2 drought, which places mandatory water restrictions on irrigation, car washing, and the use of fountain features. In December 2008, the Delta Vision Committee Implementation Report was issued. The Implementation Report recommended enacting legislation next year requiring urban water suppliers or regions to reduce their water use to achieve a statewide average of 20% per capita reduction in water use by the year 2020. The report also recommends enacting legislation to enhance and expand the State Water Resources Control Board's Water Rights Administrative Accountability. The purpose of the Bay Delta Conservation Plan is to help recover endangered and sensitive species and their habitats in the Sacramento-San Joaquin River Delta in a way that also will provide for sufficient and reliable water supplies. The Bay Delta Conservation Plan brings together several state, local, and federal agencies with the goal of improving the environmental health of the delta, studying ways to move water in and around the delta in an environmentally responsible manner, and addresses toxic pollutants and invasive species that impair water quality. Currently, the Department of Water Resources is evaluating the impacts of the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, and a joint environmental impact report is being prepared. The draft report is expected to be ready for public review and comment by the end of this year. The Department of Water Resources will serve as the lead agency under the California Environmental Quality Act, and will work in cooperation with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, the National Marine Fisheries Service, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. This concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Are there any questions, Mrs. Ritter?
I don't have any questions. I just hope it provides us with more water down here.
Mr. Lopez?
That's great, what they're doing. But I'd just like to say that our city is doing something about that. Our new civic center that we have here, we will be drilling for water or bringing water from another well that we have here locally and to help landscape our civic centers. So we're doing our part. That's it.
Yeah, I think that the presentation that was made, I think Councilmember Ritter and Mr. Campbell and I attended- and Mr. Campbell and I attended, and it's quite a scary prospect that we have. The Delta itself is in deep danger. And if that ever, if the barriers there or the ever break that keeps the saltwater intrusion from coming in, that could have a disastrous effect on all of Southern California's water supply. So, it's a problem that we've got to solve. And I know that Supervisor Horn, who was the instigator of the meeting that we attended, suggested quite forcefully that we need to do something about our own situation down here and provide our own water sources down here, and along the lines of the D-SAL plants that are, have been planned and have been built. So, that we need to really look at that. And I know that the questions I keep getting is, you know, why do we keep building in Southern California when we don't have the water? And I think that's a question that we all need to answer and to be specific in. Of course, there hasn't been a lot of building done lately, but when the economy turns around, there'll be that desire for building again. And I don't think the water's gonna change unless there's an awfully big turnaround in the drought situation that we've had for so long. So anyhow, it's something that I think is something that we need to really be aware of and to do everything we can to help solve the problem. Are there any other comments or questions from council?
I would move for approval of that issue.
Okay, of the resolution. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay, if you all please cast your votes. Okay, then that passes unanimously. The last item that was pulled from the agenda is C12, an exclusive negotiating agreement for restaurant planning. And this is, Mr. Gronky, that's your... Did you want a staff report?
No, I have some questions to staff. When this was proposed to us several weeks ago, I was a little skeptical at that time, just because of the way the economy is and so forth. And I know that according to the report here, you're gonna be working with Mr. Clog, who has expertise in finding restaurants and putting restaurant components together, which I appreciate. Has it also been looked at for the financial viability? I know a lot of times when we do major projects in town, Mr. Maral or Mr. Schaefer, someone will look at that, you know, their organizations will look at that and say, "This is something that's feasible. This is something that's practical." And particularly in these financial times, this is something that we should be entering. I guess that's my question.
Yes, and this is really the first baby step as we start down the long road of this process. And at some point in the future, we may be in a position where we think we have a viable project that can go forward, and that would be the time that we would request and elicit that type of analysis from the parties that you mentioned.
So, right now, we're not at that step. We're not at that point where we're gonna go to outside consultants and say, "Let's look at the practicality of this proposal."
Correct.
Okay. And so what we're proposing right now, if it was to come to fruition, would require that the city come up with redevelopment monies that would build the sites? And we would not operate the sites, but we would, we already own the land, and we would build the two restaurant paths and sites. And then would we equip them too, or we would equip them just with the venting and the tables and so forth, or is that really up to the restaurateurs?
All of those items are possible outcomes of this process. As I said, we're really at the very beginning of the steps. As we go forward, we'll look at all those pieces and try to craft a project that will result in the redevelopment that we want. It could include redevelopment investment, but it doesn't necessarily have to. And a lot of that'll be driven by the market at the time, in the future, hopefully a better market, where this would come forward. And so, it could include those elements, but it doesn't necessarily have to.
So if you were to envision a timeline for this, you'd say that we're at the preliminary steps. We're looking at it right now. It may be 18 to 24 months before we restart with something.
It very well could be that long. I think what we would like to do is move forward incrementally, cautiously, but be prepared to take advantage of a market that's turned around in the future. And it very well could be 18 to 24 months.
So, it's unknown exactly what the nature of these restaurants would be?
At this time, it is. This would be the first step to go down the path to determine that information.
Okay, okay. So an obligation is on the part of the Redevelopment Association and the monies that are going out for this, or is this a general fund obligation?
This would be redevelopment funds.
Okay, okay. And finally, the question is, I know with the state's situation right now with them continuing to take our money right and left, and that doesn't seem to be ending. I'm fearful that next year redevelopment money will be attacked again. What's our opportunity to bond and to find a loan out there to process this? If we were to go through with it, let's say 24 months from now, the state takes our money again. Are there agencies out there that are gonna loan us money?
Certainly, it would be more challenging environment in which to obtain financing in an environment where the state is taking redevelopment funds. It is a fluid event. It's changing all the time. And so, I think what we would do is we look at that as it changes and make evaluations as we go. That's why this is, we've broken this process down into small steps so that we can stop and pause, look at the scenery, look at the financial environment, look at the economy, and make a decision at that point. Do we think we want to go forward at this point, or do we stop and wait? So we've taken a very cautious, incremental approach while still trying to make forward progress.
Okay, okay. All I want to say about this whole process is that we were hopeful, we were hopeful that that would be the prime location within that development. And it seems like restaurateurs would rather have their restaurants right on the boulevard, you know, right on the streets with their names showing. So, they've been reluctant to come there. I think maybe we need to step forward and see if there's a process by which we can do something to move that along. And I think this is a good challenge, you know, for us. I think we need to take it on.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Let's, thank you. Let's say we do put those restaurants in. What are we gonna do about parking?
Parking's a very important piece of any successful restaurant, and there are challenges in any restaurant design. One of the things that we would look at as part of this process is how to balance the restaurant with the parking needs. And of course, it depends on the type of restaurant, and the turnover of the clientele, and all of those things. This is also within an existing development of Vista Village, so there are certain challenges related to that. But we really need to answer that question definitively, gather more information, and we're hopeful that this process will help us do that.
This process will help you figure out where to get parking when there's no parking out there now?
I think it'll help us develop information to balance the parking needs so that we can come up with a solution to the parking situation as it's developed by the restaurants. Depends on the mix of restaurants, the type of restaurant, how big, how small. But certainly, we need a solution ultimately that doesn't create a parking problem.
Well, when this first came in front of me here, I was looking at it, and I was kind of a little on a negative side with our city manager. And because, you know, it's difficult times, and restaurants are having difficult times right now. And I was a little negative on it. But the more I look at this, and the more I studied it here in the last few days, is that I was at League of Cities Conference, and there was two cities. One, there was a river between the two cities. On one side of the river, they had land, empty land, and the other side was part of a building, on one of the buildings. And a big company came out, and they wanted to come into that area for the labor situation there. And the one city says, "Hey, we're ready. We're ready to go." And we're not quite ready to go. So the company went across the street and looked at the other property, which was ready to go, which is called Shovel Ready. And because it is ready, that city was able to attract that big company with, I don't know how many thousands of employees, and it did wonders for that community. Now, with this, I see that you're spending $30,000 for the first, what's it, 90 days?
Yes.
And within that 90 days, the gentleman that you're hiring, will he have a pretty good feel or actual figures, or what's he gonna do for that 90, for those 90 days and $30,000? Actually, what is, what will he be doing?
There are many things that he's going to do, and restaurant development is complicated enough. We've talked about some of the challenges of this particular site, and so we really need a creative approach to overcome the challenges that exist there, plus to deal with the existing market that we have. And as you mentioned, being shovel-ready in the future will allow us to take advantage of opportunities, hopefully when they present themselves. Specifically, we'll be looking at the type of restaurant that could be successful there, how it would need to be designed, how it would need to work with the surrounding properties, how you would address parking needs, the financial environment, of course, will be changing, but we have to have a baseline for development, a long list of items like that.
I think that you're on the right track here, because we're not gonna get them there overnight. And I think that if there's a company, national company, who wants to come in, and you've got your homework done, you've got plans, you've got the whole thing together, and said, "Hey, we can be, we can put a building up in four months or five months, and we're ready to go," I think we'd be wise to spend this money here at this time, because it, I know it's difficult times, but I'm gonna be in favor of this tonight. Okay, I think it's a good idea.
Mrs. Ritter?
I agree. I'm in favor of it also. And I see, you know, with the real estate industry, it's increasing, it's starting, I'm starting to see some recovery, small incremental steps. So I think maybe in two years or so, maybe it will be ready. I just, being in there every month for the last six months, I've seen a slight uptick in the prices of homes and things. So, would it be possible to build a parking struc, a small parking structure adjacent to those somewhere, like that would help with the parking in that area? Is that a possibility, that would go with the restaurants when we built those, that we could build some, I mean, a small one, like either adjacent or back in the corner back there?
It's always possible to build a parking structure. It's always a question of cost. And so I think that as part of this issue, that's one of the things that we would explore. What's the best parking solution? It could be a parking structure. It could be something else.
In the channel or something?
And then you have to balance that against the cost and see if it can make financial sense to go forward. But this process will help us gather that data and look at all those options.
Okay, because, you know, there's those two cement channels that we could maybe cover and gain some parking there. So, okay, well, I'm in support of that, so I would make a motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that is approved unanimously. Next, we'll go to the, we don't have, we have no discussion items this evening, so we do have a public hearing. And the public hearing number one is the Residential Density Bonus Ordinance. City of Vista is the applicant. John Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John Connolly, Community Development Director. Ms. Patsy Chow, our city planner, will be presenting to you this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Vence. Councilmembers, the item before you this evening is concerning the Residential Density Bonus Ordinance. Just to give you quick background information on this, the state law basically requires cities to adopt a density bonus ordinance that meets or exceeds the state law requirements. Essentially, it's an incentive program that will promote development of affordable housing by building at a higher density than what the zoning allows, and that to be done in exchange for provision of affordable units on site. There are basically six types of eligible housing projects. And starting with the list there, there have to be at least five units or five dwelling units in these projects prior to getting a density bonus. So the following projects would be, which would be eligible, would be residential projects that would have very low or low-income units provided, common interest developments, meaning apartments, condominium or cooperative projects, condominium conversions that would provide low and moderate income units, also developments that have qualifying land dedication to provide additional affordable housing. And senior housing also would be eligible, and the minimum requirement is that it would have to have at least 35 dwelling units prior to a density bonus being granted. Some major components of the ordinance starts with the fact that we did include a description of all the eligible developments, which I briefly provided a description on the previous slide. And we also included the description as far as the concessions or development concessions or deviations that one would be allowed to apply for in terms of zoning code deviations. And those could be in the form of setbacks, height, or lack coverage, for instance. There are also fixed density bonuses for senior housing, which is set at 20%, and then condominium conversions set at 25%. Density bonuses actually range from minimum of five all the way up to 35% over what is allowed on a site per the zone and the land use designation. So it is in the form of a sliding scale that this particular density bonus is presented, so that you could have an award of density bonus at concessions that's based or correlated on the amount or percentage of that you have income-restricted units on the site. There is also the ability to get supplemental, additional density bonuses for projects that have qualified childcare facility on-site as part of the project, or provide qualifying land dedications. But keeping in mind that the supplemental is not to exceed, the aggregate total would not exceed 35% as far as total density bonus is concerned. As part of the ordinance, we also have a requirement provision in there that says that we can request a preliminary application or the applicant to go through one in order for us to better understand the type of project, the site plan, what they're trying to achieve in terms of density bonus, and also the concessions that are being requested. So to have a discussion prior to any formal submit of a project. We do have inclusionary housing program in the city right now, and just to highlight some of the major differences between that and the density bonus ordinance, but starting actually something that's very similar is that both programs actually do help increase the supply of affordable housing in the city. The inclusionary housing program is a program that's established by the Vista Development Code, and basically it provides the requirement to have a 6% of the units as part of the new housing development to be targeted towards lower-income households. Or in lieu of that, the applicant or the developer will pay an in-lug fee that would allow this creation of affordable housing units off-site if they're not being able to provide it on-site. And the city benefits in this case because obviously we do get the creation of affordable units. On the other side, we have the Density Bonus Ordinance, which is actually, as I mentioned before, a state law requirement. And it allows for density increase that would be over what is allowed on-site per zone, again, in exchange for provision of affordable housing units on-site. And obviously, the city would benefit in this particular case as well because of the creation of affordable housing and the density bonus units. The developer in this case would benefit from the situation due to the fact that it would be additional density that would be allowed on the site, and that would be able, they would be able to do that without actually triggering a general plan amendment or a zoning code amendment. Basically, the city through this ordinance would have the ability to implement procedures that would protect cities' interests, such as dealing with concessions that would be looked at and only granted if proven that they're economically necessary in order to provide the affordable units. And also, through this ordinance, pro forma, it would be required for consideration of the concessions to verify that, in fact, you know, the developer's financial data, that it makes sense, that the concessions are really necessary, and to really give us the staff the ability to recover any costs that are associated with reviewing these performers and also the need for the concessions. It is a state law requirement, and besides that, it would give us the ability to clarify any state law provisions and also to add contractual protections that would safeguard the city, and also to ensure that the program is being properly implemented. With that, staff's recommendation is for the adoption of the resolution that approves the negative declaration that was prepared for the Density Bonus Program, and also for the introduction and adoption of the ordinance that amends the code and adds Chapter 18.90 regarding the Residential Density Bonus Program. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is open. The first speaker that we have from the audience is Chuck Rabel.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Chuck Rabel, 821 Crescent Drive. I've been here when housing's been here for at least 10 years. And just a couple of quick points. I won't belabor the thing, but in the last 10 years, primarily due to redevelopment, 38 affordable units were lost when lows went up and we tore down an apartment complex. Then the Housing Fund was used as a bank of opportunity to clear title on Sycamore Creek, which can be attributable to 114, 118 units. I've asked continually for... I've asked continually for a year-over-year net change, okay? What was the, what was the net change to affordable or workforce housing, or senior housing, year-over-year? Another state requirement was implemented with the ordinance on granny flats, second units, a couple of years ago. It'd be nice if, again, somebody would count year-over-year, how many of those are permitted and added to inventory. Same thing in this case with this ordinance. Let's start counting. It's not rocket science, and it may lead someday to accountability, and that's the name of that tune, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Mr. Connolly, do you have a comment?
I believe that the redevelopment agency actually keeps track of those units, and I'm wondering if there might be somebody here from redevelopment that wants to comment on that? Be in the back, Mr. Rollings? And Mr. Stone?
Next, offering.
The question was the number of affordable units? Who's keeping track of the change from year to year in each of these categories?
We do keep, we do have a report that we develop each year that keeps track of that. I apologize, I don't have it with me tonight. I don't have that number committed to memory.
Did you see that Mr. Rabel gets a copy of it?
I will.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? That's the only speaker that we have that has indicated an interest in speaking. Are there any others in the audience that wish to speak to this subject matter? Seeing none, council, questions or comments or direction? Mr. Gronky.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Again, just like any other low-income housing unit that we produce, or there's some other entity produces, these would be deed-restricted for a certain amount of time?
That's correct. There would be regulatory agreements for a period of at least 30 years when we're dealing with very low, low-for-sale and rental units.
And these include units that might be made by private sector or partnerships with the city through a redevelopment agency?
Correct.
Okay, and lastly, does the, this is obviously because of state legislation. Does state legislation have supersede our own zoning ordinances? Are we talking about R1 zones will still stay R1 zones, and lower densities, higher-density zones will stay higher-density zones? There won't be any implications in that?
No, there won't be any implications in that. It supersedes our zoning ordinance and requires us to adopt higher densities if they provide the number of affordable units that are required by the state law.
Within the proper zoning.
Correct.
The way he's saying is it doesn't require us to change zones?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. or Mrs. Ritter, excuse me.
I hope this isn't kind of a dumb question. And it says, major components of the ordinance, and it says supplemental density bonuses for projects with qualified childcare facilities, which I understand. It said, or qualifying land dedications, and I was wondering, what's a qualifying land dedication?
It's basically when an applicant is proposing to dedicate or transfer additional land for production of affordable housing onsite, which will be part of the development. So if one wanted to have, or dedicate additional land, it would have to meet certain standards, like, for instance, an additional one acre minimum of land for additional affordable housing on that site, to meet very low, you know, provision of at least 10% for very low-income households. So it would be part of the development, basically.
Okay.
So additional land for the development.
Okay, okay. Okay, then that's all.
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
This is for John. Apartments that are apartments that are, you know, two or three, a couple bedrooms, and that are being converted into condos, like condos for sale, the conversions, that they're doing the conversions. Now, when those apartments go in, do we get credit for those? Do we get credit when they go in?
Credit in terms of low-income unit credit?
When they go in?
Only if they're deed-restricted to certain income levels. Most of the apartments we have in town are just market rate, so we don't get credit for those. They were built way back when.
But if they go into conversion?
Right, then at that point, we would evaluate it, but our code right now really prohibits conversions. Well, we have, we have one way of doing it that's very difficult to do, so we see very few of them. We don't have sort of an open conversion policy the way a lot of cities do, so we see very few.
So there's nothing in the future here that we're looking at for any conversions here in this community?
At this point, no. I haven't been provided any direction by the council to do that.
If they do, do we get credit for them?
If they're deed-restricted. If they fall under the provisions of the state law, by providing the number, a certain number of income-restricted units as part of the conversion, then they can get a density bonus, they could add units to that development. But it would depend on the number of low-income units that they provide in their conversion proposal.
Okay. Thank you, John. Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Mrs. Ritter, did you want to make a motion, or did you have a question?
I have a motion, if you'd like one.
Sure.
Okay, then I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the negative deck for additional, for addition to the Vista Municipal Code, and regarding the residential density bonus program, et cetera.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lopez, Mr. Gronky, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I was going to say second.
Okay. Okay, please cast your votes. And that is approved unanimously. That concludes the items that we have on the agenda this evening. We have now oral communications.
First, we begin three quick items from the last month, and it's one article that I think is a good job, but they need us to, I understand that there are legal issues, but I urge you to push the lawyers, give us some direction, that's good to say, and let's get some monitoring of this stuff, and let's promise for a good goal.
Yeah, Mr. Rabel, these are not our lawyers that are pursuing the case, and we've done everything we can to move them along. We are very anxious to see that take place as a city council.
The bad guys win, and this is a little longer to hold on.
That's the truth.
Item two, we noticed that there is now a shop Vista program, adds into paper to the tune of about 75,000 dollars of our tax money. Question being, is there anything in place to measure success, and what? Oh, I'm sorry. I was supposed to do that. I thought it was remote.
Someone must have turned it off.
Someone must have turned it off. It generally isn't turned off.
No.
Someone did just turn it on.
There you go. In any case, when you put programs like this in place, there ought to be metrics put in place as well, so we know what the goal was and whether we succeeded or failed. In the same, in the same vein, I suggest that you ask the propel contractors, that when they have to file 1099s every April on all their subcontractors, that they sort the subcontractors by zip code, and let's see where the money went. Any question?
I don't have any questions. Do any of you?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Next would be Edgar Engert. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Oh, you did good.
Thank you.
Most people have a problem with it.
Okay.
Too many E's, I guess.
There are a lot.
Okay, my name is Edgar Engert, and I reside on 1054 La Sombra in Lake San Marcos. I'm here about my building on 714 in South Santa Fe in Vista. I'm here to give you an update on my rental property. I'm asking the council for some direction and change in the zoning of Santa Fe. The building was rented to Vista Branding. Vista Branding moved out at the time, then I rented it to Clean Core. He moved out and stuck me with $6,000 back rent. After him, I had rented out to a poultry shop, and he disappeared, left the place in a shambles, and stuck me with $3,000, plus they took out all the fixtures, the heater, the air conditioning. It was a mess. They took us $7,000 to clean it up, put new carpeting in, painted, and make it presentable. In the meantime, we had lots of inquiries about rentals, but the zoning would not allow it, because you are in a rezoning, trying to upgrade the property, the street. I had a tattoo shop which wanted it, and I understand, now you have one in the city of Vista that wanted my property, but it wasn't allowed. Then I had a bail bond who rented a property for a couple of weeks, and then was told he needs to close up, it's not allowed in the city. He would love to come back. It's really all, this would be, an obvious feeling would be, go in there, do his paperwork, and leave. It's a real simple and clean way to rent a business. I understand that the city wants to renovate the street, but that could be six, seven years, who knows? Because I've been getting notices about meetings which are supposed to help the upgrading. Now, I got to tell you that I'm losing a lot of rent, the city loses taxes, and that's not good. Not good for you, not good for me. I'm about to retire, I would like to have a little retirement income, but right now that's not feasible, so I'm hoping that the city maybe give me a break, maybe have the bail bond back, and give me that chance. And at the time, when you want to revitalize the street, and you have some option, I make that in the least close that he needs to move out. I will make sure, then if the city wants to revise it, I would be good. For right now, times are tough, as you know. You've got a lot of empty buildings. You don't want more empty buildings. There's a chance to fill one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greenberg. Did you want to say something, how he might proceed?
I have a question.
First of all, Mr. Lopez, did you have a question?
Yes, I just want to say that this gentleman has the building right across the street from my restaurant, and they've always been very good neighbors, and I'm glad that you fixed the building up the way you have done. You've done a good job, and I hope that our staff will work with you to see what they can do to help you out, because you've done a great job in keeping that building up here lately, especially right now, it looks in great shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Connolly, have you met with this gentleman?
Yes, Mayor, actually, I've spoken to Mr. Engert on the telephone about the zoning issues out there. The specific plan in its current form restricts the uses that he referenced, as well as, you know, a number of other things. It's a pretty restricted zone right now, based on the way the specific plan was written back in the 90s when it was originally adopted. That whole area was intended to be redeveloped, at that time to be retail, and now we're looking at a mixed-use designation, but it's going to be similarly restricted in terms of the retail types of uses that we're looking for in the corridor. So I indicated to him at that time that there wasn't support from the staff level of changing the zoning to allow heavier uses or different types of commercial uses, but of course, it's up to the discretion of the council if they want to provide that direction.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Okay, thank you, Ms. Greenberg. In order to give you direction, I think what we're saying is, is that I don't see any effort on the city council, or any desire on the city council to change the zone on there, to allow bail bondsmen or tattoo parlors in that area. Mr. Lopez?
Yes, specific plan 26, is that correct? Yes, and so there's already, there's already, it's already set on what's allowed there in that area, but I know it's hard to rent the buildings out right now, and I know you can't say that we're going to develop that in the next six months, I understand that, but we just need to keep working with our staff to see if we can get it rented, because it just, I understand.
Like I said, so many, several which came in and wanted rented, and I had now sent them to the city, and they come back and say, the city said no. So somebody who wanted to sell water cycles, which store them inside and bring them outside and display, came to the planning commission, or to the city, and I said, no. There's several others, I mean, it's just, it's been tough. Yes, flower shops, you like a flower shop in there, that's a lot. Flower shops are suffering at this time. They're just about making a living. You know, it's just really tough.
It is.
And so I would wish that the city council would consider, maybe give me the option for the time till you really get active and do what you want to do, and then we'll better deal with it.
Okay.
Maybe the city wants to pay you rent, and I leave it empty. That's okay too.
All right, thank you.
I know that.
We don't have any money either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Gina Knutson. Again, I'm having a hard time reading the writing.
Gina Knutson, 1000 Vale Terrace. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Gina Knutson. I work as a program manager at Vista Community Clinic for the Tobacco Control Program. Vista Community Clinic is here as a resource to provide technical assistance should you consider moving forward on a policy that bans smoking in parks. Currently, there are only two cities in the entire county of San Diego that do not have a smoking ban in their parks, which is Vista and Santee. We can provide sample policy language and help with signage in regards to placement, design, and funds. We know these are tough economic times, and we have provided this type of assistance before to cities such as San Marcos, Oceanside, the North County Transit District, Palomar College, and most recently, the city of Escondido. The city of Escondido is going to have their first reading of their ordinance for the smoke-free parks tomorrow. The second reading will be the following Wednesday, which is the 19th of August. I want to talk about, we went out and actually looked at your parks in the city of Vista, me and my colleague who's sitting out there in the audience, Dana Hosford, and you have beautiful, clean parks. We were just absolutely amazed at how beautiful your parks are. One city, we've worked in all of the cities here in North County, one particular city, I'm not going to name names, we have a youth group that volunteers with us, and they go help us do park cleanups, and we bring the resulting cigarette butts to city council to help convince, you know, that this is needed. One particular city, we had a group of youth that picked up 10,000 butts in an hour and a half in a city park, and you guys are nowhere near that. You have beautiful, beautiful parks. But there are many reasons, I mean, your parks are clean, but there are many reasons to adopt an ordinance. One is that the butts are not biodegradable. They can, they don't degrade for over 15 years. Another one is kids can pick them up and put them in their mouth, it can make them sick, nauseous, dizzy. Those are one of many reasons why to adopt a policy. Please consider a no-smoking policy for Vista's parks and recreational areas. The result would be safer and cleaner parks for all of those who enjoy our beautiful parks here in Vista. Thank you.
Mrs. Geldrich, where are we on this?
It's, the ordinance is before the Parks and Recreation Commission, the end of this month, and then it will be brought back to council for their consideration in September.
Great.
So hopefully, there will only be one city left in Santee.
Yes, and they're going to be hard.
We can work on them.
Yeah, they'll be hard to get to move, but yeah. Thank you very much.
Very much. Did you have a question of Mrs. Knutson?
I have a comment. Ironically, I was down at the downtown area during the weekend when we had the ban there, and then we had the barbecue, and then we had the rod run, and while I was there, I happened to see Mr. Byron, and I said, wouldn't it be great if we pursued a smoking restriction in our parks? He drags me, drags me over to their table, and proceeds to tell me that the staff is already working on that. So I want to thank staff for that. I want to thank you both for pursuing that, and I look forward to voting on that.
Great.
So, thank you.
We all do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes our oral communications for this evening. Next would be any comments or reports from the staff, and as usual, we'll start with our city attorney, Mr. Piper. our city attorney, Mr. Piper. Nothing to report, but welcome back, everyone. Thank you. Mrs. Ritter? Geltor?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing, the continuing saga of what we're, how we're going to face what the state's taking away for Vista on the general fund is 1.6 million. We're actively reviewing the securitization proposal, and that is California Communities is looking at potentially providing loans to cities to loan money to the state. It's a little bit of a circle, and it seems at first that that wasn't a viable option, and now it may be a viable option, depending upon the payback provisions, as well as not knowing if in three years that the state would actually pay the city back. So we'd probably have to at least set aside those monies to make sure that they were there, even though we took, excuse me, advantage of the loan from California Communities Consortium. So that, as well as fighting all of the takes from redevelopment that are being proposed, and we're not quite sure, again, how they're, we know that the lawsuits will be filed, just as they were last year, and that process took about nine months, which was actually pretty quick. This is much larger, and the state thinks that they have loopholes that they can get around the, why they lost last time. So again, for Vista, that does threaten our bonding capacities or abilities, but we are in a better position than most cities on redevelopment takes, but our first year would be about $5 million on redevelopment. So we will keep you posted.
Thank you. Mr. Gronky? Thank you, Mayor.
I just have to comment on that. Ms. Gelder and I had a little discussion about that loan principle the other day, and I just have to say, I've heard of the Peter Principle, but I never heard of the Peter Pays Paul Principle, and I think that's exactly what that was. Couple of things occurred recently. The closing of the Townsite Partnership the other day, I think saddens me because, like so many nonprofits right now, they're really hurting. I mean, everybody's hurting it, and they're hurting greatly, and the closing of that, which was really an asset to our city. I do appreciate the staff and trying to keep the doors open as much as possible to working with the Townsite Partnership and trying to keep that nonprofit open, so I do appreciate that. Thank you. The other thing I want to do is say, just have everybody say a prayer. Our fire chief, ex-fire chief Roger Purdy is going through some medical problems right now, so just keep in your prayers, please.
Mrs. Ritter?
I have good things to say. So we opened a target this week, this summer, and for anybody who doesn't know, in the Business Park, we created jobs out there, and also our Moonlight Amphitheater opened with its new, 42nd Street with its new stage, which is absolutely beautiful, so, and this weekend, it starts Phantom. It's not Phantom of the Opera, like you think, but it's the story of Phantom. It's outstanding, so, anyway, anybody hasn't been there and needs to go and see our new stage there, so I just wanted to, I'll close with a happy note.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, am saddened by hearing about the Townsite Partnership, especially with the folks that were there who were out in the community, helping that part of our community. I hope that they continue somehow, this program continues somehow, because they're doing a lot of good things out there. It doesn't look like it, maybe visual, but they are. They are, they have brought that community together, and it's done very well. Like everything, times are very tough, people are having difficulties, state, federal government, they're all having their problems, and so they have to tighten up. And so I hope we can continue that, because it is important in the Townsite area, because here we have millions of dollars that we've spent in the Vista Village, and if we continue to, if we ignore, not, excuse me, if we ignore that part of town, then maybe it would affect the values of our properties. So we do need to continue to work on that. The city has done a great job with what the resources they have, and hope they continue. Now, I'm going to speak about one other thing here. First of all, welcome back to all of you, to this, back to our meetings here, and, but a while back, we had the park right here behind the city, what's it called?
Wildwood?
Wildwood, it's, where we had all the mobile homes.
Oh, Sycamore Creek.
Sycamore Creek, excuse me. Sycamore Creek. We had Sycamore Creek going there, and it went away, and then we had it sold to a developer, and that developer, we worked out a deal where we would give a small portion of that to the, for the barn, for the wrecking of a barn, and the developer went away, and so did the idea go away. It's a shame that the ideas are forgotten, but yet there's people there who are waiting, and I believe that this city should continue to do what they promised the people of that organization, not to ignore them and say, hey, we don't have a deal, we're going to have to wait down the road now. I've heard that too many times, so please, council and city manager and mayor, we need to do something about it, because those folks are waiting. Thank you.
This is Gelder. As far as the Townsite, excuse me?
Excuse me. Ask me.
I understand that the Townsite Partnership, that we're in the process of restructuring that?
Yes.
And that in a restructured manner, it should be back with us fairly soon.
Certainly. In the fall, yes.
In the fall. Which would be when?
Most likely October.
October? Okay, very good. Okay.
We're interrupting you, Mayor. I'm sorry that I interrupted you.
It's okay. Mrs. Ritter, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I didn't realize, I don't think the dream is dead for a barn, for them. I didn't know that they had the money and were ready to go.
Well, if the idea is there, and the will is there, and something starts happening, the money will come, because there are people who are willing to donate, and, but the problem is, is that what are you going to donate to? If there's nothing there, if there's no direction there, they're not going to donate. But once it starts, they will donate.
Once it starts, we'll look at it.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you very much for your attendance, and we'll see you in two weeks.